City Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Shanta, Councilwoman Craig.
Here.
Mayor Rich.
Here.
And Councilwoman LaFoster and Ms. Miller are about.
Okay. Flight salute, please, drawing some flight salute. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get to the approval of the agenda, I understand we need to have some information from the city manager. Yes, Julie?
Well, I'll have Julie help me out here. Well, we have an urgency item that brought my attention today regarding the airport. It has to do with grant funding. They need to have a signature by tomorrow for us to qualify for the grant funding to do the engineering. So I'll talk more about it if you choose to have it added as an urgency item. And Julie D., there's two motions that have to be made.
Right, the first one needs to determine this is indeed an urgency item and the council agrees it should be added to the agenda as an amendment and then a second vote approving the amended agenda.
Right, well, just write two there, then we get it onto the agenda. Those two go into action, so, okay. So, any questions from the council members?
No, sir. I move that we add an item to the agenda under New Business A. I'm sorry, New Business B?
B.
New Business B.
Business B.
Consideration of Resolution 2018-16.
Okay. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And now I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I'm sorry. Approve the agenda as amended.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Well, this is the other resolution that we need to pass through.
It's Resolution 2018-16 for the IPA.
Right, but that's what comes up on the agenda or something?
Right, this was just to add it to the agenda.
Add it to it. Okay, with that in mind, approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from August 23rd, 2018.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no presentations. I guess I should have asked, but let's just run down the list. Economic development, tourism. At this point, we've got other things going on right now. We've been planning on getting together and going over both the planned industrial park at the airport and also what we could do with tourism and then trying to become the next Trail Town. So we'll look at that once things have settled down in the environment. Next on the list, we have finance. Nothing going on there?
Finance hasn't mentioned until last meeting, anything from staff?
Same with public facilities and services. Sort of the airport, we're dealing with that tonight. Emergency plan tasks, nothing to report on that, I assume, right? Veterans memorial, nothing to report yet at this point. Moss pretty sure, nothing new?
There have been some movement, there has been some movement, which is very promising. The drawings that UP has been waiting for, they've received and make comments. The only comment of relevance that I can share with you right now is that UP is asking for a bit more fencing in the plan than what was in there. There were reasons why some fencing wasn't in there for vibration paths and things like that. The trail designer shared with me that he thinks that he's lost that fight and is gonna basically just put in the fencing that UP is requesting, I believe, in the next round. And he's working on that this week. The only other piece to share with you is that the high rail trip that UP is helping to organize with what we hope are maybe some other people, that might be...
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders, perhaps, eventual donors.
Of course. Vice Mayor Shonda said.
Of course, of course. Has been proposed for rescheduling to September 16th, I believe. I'm sorry, is it the right day? No, that's not the right day. It's the Wednesday after that.
September 19th.
September 19th.
Now, if you know, if I do, we can mark something.
I will do that.
That'd be first on the list.
It's just a proposed date at this point, so they're working it out. That's all I have to share at this point, thank you.
Question, I know the last time we thought about this, we were thinking it might be done by September. I assume that's not gonna happen.
No. Well, last time we talked about this, we talked about perhaps construction being able to begin by the fall.
I was just trying to make a joke, I understand.
Yeah, you know, there's definitely stakeholders that are advocating a more aggressive timetable and there are people who are, you know, even if we got the lease from UP, the thing's been essentially done. There's still some environmental that needs to be completed and some permits before we can actually begin construction.
And even if UP is getting to the point where we're as close as we are at your time, so...
Yeah, one final thing. I just got an email today from the Trails Association lead, who is helping coordinate a meeting next week, just amongst ourselves, to talk about, you know, an amended timetable, kind of check in where we're at, which is more movement than we've had in a while. So I should have more to report for next week.
Okay, beautification, anything you want to say about that?
No, we skipped the beautification meeting in September.
October is...
October is next meeting.
I understand. Cannabis task force, nothing to report at this time? I know we got the ballot thing coming out in November, but other than that, we're all ready for what?
We are waiting for Mr. Kenny to complete the applications as well as the sort of ordinance version of the big matrix that we came up with. So I'm going to contact him. I would like to maybe contact him with you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps even tomorrow, just to kind of see where he's at. I asked Mark about it and he asked us to reach out directly, just to check in and see if we can get a new timetable for when he thinks those will be done.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I said that with this case here, the ordinance isn't in John Kenny's hands, so he's got lots going on, but he does report to the city council. You're looking at maybe making an action, so I suggested maybe reaching out to my phone first.
Right.
And that could be all council, but not the city.
Well, the only thing I was gonna recommend is wouldn't it be more logical, since Mark has been working all along, for the two of you to do it, I mean, mine if you wanted?
Yeah, my only thinking was that it should come from the mayor, but that makes more sense if we had a full council action to be reported on. So, yeah, I could call him with money, please, Mike.
Oh, whichever is fine. I have a question to ask. Do we not need to send land use ordinance to planning? And why aren't we sending SOTs to deal with that?
Well, we don't have it yet, so we're waiting.
It's right there on the back.
Well, yeah, but the language of it is being worked on right now.
Good question. Okay, moving on from there, we have announcements of public comment. It's time for the public to make any comments or something to the agenda. Do we have any public? Okay, no public comments, any public?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, will you come up?
I don't have to come up?
Please.
I was just wondering...
Say your name and where you live.
I'm Sandra Beliats in Dunzner, please.
How do you get your name?
Sandra Beliats.
Hi.
Hi. I was just wondering, for evacuation purposes, will it Simon Blair or...
We'll be going over that shortly. So the deputy will be giving us the information that the sheriff's office has put together, so how do you feel about your questions?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No? Close the podium, public comment. Marjana, would you like to state anything, public announcements at this point?
Actually, I have something that really quite nice that happened to me over the weekend. I was invited to the cooperators' meeting at the incident command center. And join me for it, and it was quite impressive. We got to listen to all the commanders, you know, how they were going to deal with, you know, that date. They have a meeting at 10 o'clock every morning and I was introduced. I was not expecting that. I saw all the stakeholders that have a vested, you know, interest. Saw at least five private landowners there, the tribes, you know, Sheriff Lopey was there. Of course, our fire chief was there, Sergeant Merrill ended up coming. Then we got a little private tour of... Pretty impressive that they put that up in one day. And I sure hope that we don't ever have to have a staging that large ever in our area ever again. Though it's impressive, it's from military style, they had that up in one day. And there is more people there than the population of Dunzner. They have like 2,800 people out there.
Just showed up someplace.
Yeah, I mean, it's just amazing. They have, you know, Cal Fire, they have the forestry department, they have auxiliary help. But it's a little city, I mean, it has its own IT department, it has its own, you know... And then I found out the catering was coming out of New Mexico. And then you see all the little puppings. And then, you know, Cal Fire, because it's state, you know, doesn't have to stay there, they've got local, you know, facilities, but it was just really, really impressive sight. And the gentleman that owns the property, I had met him a few years back, and it's nice that, you know, he was able to lease that out and make it available of, you know, something this large and this important to the whole area. So it was a much better way to spend my Labor Day than I had anticipated.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gray. Excuse me a second. Smoke is rough.
All right. I don't have anything other than to say, I wanted to say thank you to Bruce and Sheriff Lopey, who's not here yet, but for just what I thought was very calm and appropriate leadership over the last couple of days in dealing with the situation with the Delta Fire and before that with the Hurst Fire too. Just wanted to say thank you for the calmness with which you approach it because it seems easy to... There's always a fine line between, you know, being appropriately concerned and, you know, causing, you know, having a panic type of situation. So I thought you guys did a really good job of helping us understand what advisory is before an order. And I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Thank you very much. I felt that my role in this has been to be a teacher, that part of it came out. And so that's what I've been trying to do as much as anything else, just to hear that if people do more, they would feel less anxiety, so thank you for those kind words. Mr. City Manager?
I want to pass on from our fire chief, Dan Padilla. He was gonna try to be here this evening, but he got pulled away because of the fire, understandably. But it's been confirmed that they're gonna be holding a meeting, a community meeting, at the high school tomorrow at 6:00 PM regarding the fire. So please do try to get the word out that that's gonna be tomorrow. Also, on what Councilmember Craig was saying, I came into town late yesterday and the sheriff's department had quite a few people here and they were having somebody here at the sheriff's office through the night just in case anybody had any questions. And one of the things that are critical in times of crisis, or potential crisis, is communication. And that's one of the things I've seen in the past, and when communication is not very effective, that's when things really get to go sideways. So I thought that was a really good thing, just to have somebody physically here. Lights are on, people, you know, if they're concerned, were able to stop by and call. And they've also been working quite a bit, putting together this plan, which Sergeant Whitstein is gonna get to here in a little bit to talk about. A lot of work's been going into this recently too. So they've really been working hard to do the best they can for the city of Dunzner. So I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else you want to talk about?
No, not this time.
Got a fight with your daughter, granddaughter on the trip home last night?
Oh, yeah, and two daughters.
Sergeant Whitstein, or sue to me, do you want to wait for your reports when the sheriff is here and do it all together, or do you want to report something now, or how do you want to do it?
I report something now.
Okay, thank you. Could you stand up there, so if he gets, you know, get a good shot of you?
Good evening. I wanted to speak to a couple of different things here regarding the fire. First of all, the Code Red system, there was some concerns that came in through City Hall about not being able to get the system work for some households or phones. I did do a little research on it. I just want to point out that if anybody's out there doesn't have a smartphone or doesn't have internet at their house, they can call a number that I have provided to the city manager and get and register their landline. I do want to point out though that that number is Eastern Time, so you gotta call between 6:00 AM and 3:00 PM. But you don't need a smartphone and you don't need internet to get signed up with Code Red.
Sergeant, would you give that number out so that people...
I posted it on our city's website. I'll bring it up and get the number if you...
I got it right here. Yeah, it'll be posted on the city's website, but the number is 866-939-0911. And this came from the area, one of our area OES coordinators. So you don't have to have the internet, you don't have to have a smartphone. If you do have a smartphone or the internet, you can go to the, for Android phones, you can go to the Google Play Store and download to your phone there. iPhone users, I'm not sure you guys have a different thing. But anyways, there's also a link on the Siskiyou County website that can help you get that app for your phone as well. So hopefully that'll take care of some of the issues here. So just a quick update, the sheriff's gonna speak more to this, but I just got the phone with him a few minutes ago. The fire seems to be primarily moving northwest. It is still inching its way north, but overall, the incident remains unchanged from last night, other than working a little bit harder this way. There is spotting, fire spotting on both sides of the freeway. He is saying that he wants the evacuation advisory for the city of Dunzner to stay in place. And but an evacuation order at this point for the city of Dunzner is looking like it's unlikely. But we assisted the Chester County Sheriff's Office. They put in a mutual aid request for us to come down and help them with evacuations. As of last night, they evacuated, did an evacuation advisory up to the county line, Siskiyou County line, but they were doing door-to-door evacuations up to Sims Road. So that's several miles down the road. And they said at that point, there's no need to do door-to-door evacuation. So it's still a ways away. Last I heard, there is zero percent containment on it. We're still early on in the incident.
Question. So how, the people in Castella, is that still a warning or is that a...
I am sorry, I think that that was, I think that that was an order. I think that they, when the fire, when it started, they issued that it's up to the county line to evacuate. So we do, we have had people from Castella that has evacuated, that I have heard. But I think that people have probably started to trickle back a little bit. The sheriff is gonna have more information on the status of the fire, but that's what he gave me over the phone. I ended up handing out some packets to the council. If I can first just draw your attention to the paperwork here. Each one of you has an incident, status summary report from Hurst Fire and the Delta Fire. These are reports that we get every day. This is a report that I got this morning, so I'm sure there's probably been some changes, but this is the latest that we have here. This report will show you residences that are threatened, have been affected, how many people have been evacuated, et cetera. So this is as of this morning. You can flick through that and educate yourself on where we're at. Then drawing your attention to the evacuation plan. This is a pretty comprehensive plan. It does involve Chester County, the areas that are affected. I did limit the package that I provided to the Dunzner, Siskiyou County area. I did also provide the whole report to the city manager. But if I can just spend a couple of moments here on this. We decided to split Dunzner up into sections. And if you can refer you to the map that's on the last page of that particular packet. You'll see that when it comes, when it crosses over into Dunzner, we're gonna have 21 West, 22, 22 West, and then 23 West. And that's gonna be the city of Dunzner area. The evacuation routes, they are articulated in the report here. Basically, if we do, the fire incident does come to our city limits. We're gonna have an evacuation order. Just to summarize very briefly, if on the east side, if you live south of Bridge Street, then we're gonna be directing the evacuation to head south and then get on the northbound I-5 on-ramp and head north. All traffic is gonna be heading northbound. So but if you live south of Bridge Street, we're gonna be going down to the South Dunzner exit and referring you up here. If you're south of Branstadter Street, same thing, we'll be going down Dunzner Avenue, get on northbound I-5 and head that way. North of Branstadter, up to the central on-ramp here, you'll be hitting that exit there. If you are north of the 800-foot bridge and if you are on Siskiyou Avenue at all that neighborhood over there, we're gonna be directing traffic up to the north on-ramp. So that's the abridged version of this report.
Same with Dunzner Avenue?
Yes.
Obviously.
Yes, yeah. And all this is provided to the city manager. So this is a, you know, in spite of the bad news that these fires are... It has caused us to get organized here and come up with an evacuation plan in case something happens. So there is some good that's coming from this. We are attending, the sheriff's office is attending briefing meetings on the fire twice a day. One at 10:00 in the morning and then there's another one in the evening that we're gonna be attending now. So we are staying informed, we are staying updated with the information and I'm confident at this point that we'll be able to pass on the appropriate information. Regarding the siren question, just what I, if there is an evacuation order, then the siren will sound. I'm told that there is another siren that's not functioning correctly up in the northern part of town. Is that right? I can't really speak to that, but I know that it's gonna be worked on, but...
I've asked the sheriff to have somebody on the sheriff's department if that does happen, if we have an evacuation, to make a round up through Siskiyou and Dunzner Avenue up north there to make sure that they broadcast, because we don't have any way of hearing horns anywhere up here.
Yeah, and if we did get an evacuation order, you would see a ton of sheriff's office resources coming in here. We'll be doing door-to-door, we'll be announcing over our PA, the loudspeakers. So we would definitely be giving everything that we can to the effort. We do also have a list of people who have disabilities and may need help getting out. So we also have a list that's part of our evacuation plan for members in the community. Yeah, any questions?
Well, I should go ahead. You have a question?
I was just curious if there's a number of people can call if there's somebody who is disabled, who's not on that list, if there's somebody that...
Yeah, you would just want to call the sheriff's office. You know, in an event where, you know, it's an evacuation order, even 911 would help, or it would be fine. But you can call the sheriff's office, give us that information, and then we would take care of it.
Would your question be answered back there?
As to how much time, like, you have, like, do you have any battery of like 20 minutes to get out or...
I would imagine that there would be plenty of time. There wouldn't be the fire crossing two city limits and then the order comes out. It would be, we would have plenty, we'd get plenty of notice.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I wouldn't worry about that. But with being in the advisory right now, it is a good idea to pack some stuff in case you do have to leave. So just kind of prepare for evacuation.
Is transportation provided for people who don't have cars?
Not that I'm aware of, but if it came down to somebody not have transportation, I'm sure that we can help arrange that. So we don't have a list of people who don't have transportation right now.
Are you going to Dunzner and ask people to turn names for people who don't have transportation?
We haven't yet, maybe that'd be a good idea, that can maybe come through.
Actually, we do have something there. Councilmember Spurlock created a page on our city website that allows people to refer neighbors who may have problems with disabilities. And that gets updated for him, so he can let us know if there is anybody. I'd also say the other thing to keep in mind is that checking in with the Community Resource Center is another good way, because they have been trying all along to find out who the people are in the community that may be in need of a situation like this. So I would let them know. And just to let you know, Stephen Bryan, who's the director there, made his way all the way down from Lake Chester today and came to a roadblock and instead of saying, "Well, I'll just go home," he called me and tweeted myself and the sheriff who's out of the town. And I just want you to know, he's a good resource, he cares. So if you're in town and you don't know what to do, give the Resource Center a call. Anything else, sir? Certainly. More questions? Did you certainly go ahead?
I would just like to add, it's really important that everybody takes individual, be proactive and ensuring that you're prepared. We do have the evacuation warning. That, in my book, means be ready. We've got packages ready to go, we got all things, our important documents, there's checklists. We put checklists on our website. You can go to FEMA, you can go to Red Cross, there's checklists. Get one of those and make sure that you're prepared, not just for fires, but for floods, earthquakes, all those things. And just be ready to leave, because when the time hits, let's say we do have mandatory evacuation, it may not be the one that we're looking at right now. It could be a fire or something else. It just, it's, you don't want to try to think about what you need to do in those circumstances. It's very difficult. And when these types of things happen, the resources we have are going to be very, very busy, focusing on the mass safety, you know, directing people to the freeways, you know, going around trying to get the people out. So it's really important that if you know a neighbor that has special needs, reach out to that neighbor. Or if you, yourself, if you don't have a ride, you know, who can you go to? Because if you're gonna wait for somebody to come get you, you know, like if we have a list, or the list that we have, you may not, I wouldn't rely on that. I'm sure that they're gonna do the best they can and try to get to them, but it's really, really important for each individual to have a plan. That is your best chance of success.
Mr. Mayor, if I can speak to that real quick, is... Certainly.
So I wanted to second that. I mean, we're looking at this from the perspective of the current fire situation, you know, the Dunzner and Hurst Fire. But I was working at the Weed Police Department when the Bull's Fire happened. And if we ended up getting an event like the Bull's Fire, say another fire started, which there's been a couple of incidents where people flicking cigarettes out the window, causing small fires. So if we had an incident like that and there was a wind event and the fire that ripped through Weed a few years ago, it went so fast. And if we have an event like that, it's gonna be very, very difficult to deal with the people who don't have transportation, because we're just gonna be just hustling and trying to get everybody safe. So I would ask from the sheriff's office that if you don't have transportation, try to check with your neighbor, your friends, your family, to see if you can link up with them in case an evacuation is necessary, because we will be tapped, but we will assist in any way that we can.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, the other thing we were talking about today was how to hold vehicles. And I'm not there for any sharing of your vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, that's another good idea. Keep your vehicles topped off of fuel. It's another thing that's gonna get cut off and so don't, and then if you have a tank, you'll fill it up, or if you push a tank, you'll fill it up.
Thank you. So what I'd like to add to this conversation is that, first of all, thank you very much for your response. I'm really glad to see that you did something, do I believe, for us to have an actual evacuation plan. And I see that you jumped on that and you did it and brought it here to us without us having to raise any kind of ruckus, and I appreciate that. Appreciate you had started that. I think that this is the first fire, the first fire in my tenure here in town in over a decade that caused any kind of real concern like this. I know other people in the past many years, past, had big fires, but this is something new and different for us. And I know that when it first started, there was a lot of... And I know that when it first started, there was a lot of panic, that people were concerned and didn't know anything. Hopefully, on top of everything that's happened over the last two weeks, we've done a couple of things. On one hand, we've gotten to know things a little bit better, we understand what will happen if something happens, so what will take place. We have an evacuation plan, you can look at that ahead of time. There are checklists that you can go over. But I think the other big thing right now is to, one thing that we all can do, we really don't have at this point a real functioning neighborhood watch. It would have been nice to have had that in place the way we wanted to, where it was organized and we had it all broken down, we had captains, but we don't have that right now. So following on with Sergeant Wedsley that had mentioned, this is a time in your neighborhood to maybe go to a door you haven't knocked on in a while, to reach out to people and make sure that everybody is covered. So it's a time for the community to pull together, and I think we'll be the better for it at the end of this. And the last thing I'd like to say is, in answer to the question you had about how much time we would have, we saw with the Hurst Fire that it came to a particular spot and it stopped, and we were lucky there at Tombstone Mountain, that they were able to stop it in that valley. And you saw that even if it did break there, how fast it was moving because of the weather, we would have had five days, a week, or whatever to plan and move out if it started progressing our way. What is so scary about this one is two things. Number one, how ferocious it is. And secondly, that we have a valley that we drive up and down every day, and that valley lets the fire drive up and down too. So what we have to be careful of right now is to realize that the wind is going in a good direction right now, it's pushing it northwest, but right now, we're living at the whims of the winds. And we just have to be prepared, so if something does change or something happens down the street, you're ready. This is a good opportunity, and I encourage everyone to do that. Lastly, I want to thank all the first responders, all the people on the fire line, all the people keeping us raised. I think you can sense now why, when I first said that I trusted Chief Bedea, if you were there at the meeting we had at the community building, and you saw the people all around the room, all of them there to support us, I think you understand that we're living in a spot that's kind of dangerous, but we've got a lot of good people on our side, and let's pray for them tonight. With that in mind, let's move on with the next thing we have on our agenda. If I can find my agenda. Consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, old business, cemetery contract amendment. Mr. City Manager?
Okay. I brought to the city council a contract back in August, August 2nd, I think it was. And it was approved, but one of the issues that we came across in getting that contract signed after the budget was passed was meeting the insurance requirements. And one of the things that, that I did unknowingly was that I adjusted the insurance coverage requirements to what SCORE required. I think I did that a while ago, and it was higher than what was in there in the past. So when Lily Jones went to her insurance provider to get the appropriate coverage, they said they couldn't get the one type of coverage for the automobile unless it was commercial. So she was originally on like a personal coverage, so to get the $1 million coverage, had she had to go to a commercial type of coverage. So this was something that wasn't really aware of at the time. And in talking, actually Blake did a lot of communications with SCORE to really vet this out as to what's required and what kind of work they're going to be doing with the vehicle, on the property, stuff like that. And after Blake's investigation and discussion with both Lily Jones and with SCORE, we felt that it would be best to require the $1 million coverage on the vehicle, since they have trucks that go in there to do landscaping and stuff like that. So the cost for that coverage is, I believe, is around $800. I've put it up to $900 just to cover us for the term of the contract, it'll probably go up. And we're still quite a bit under what I believe we could get if we were to go out the bid. So I'm recommending that we increase the contract by $900 per year. But that's really, that cost is going to cover the insurance, mostly cover the insurance coverage. It's not really going in her pocket.
The only question I have, did you say there's no budget amendment required?
There, I believe I included a budget, no, there is, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to need a budget amendment form. I thought I pulled one in here, but I don't, so I apologize for that.
Okay, any questions to the council?
Couldn't we just approve the budget amendment now as well, by motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We can add that to the motion.
No other questions?
Question, no. Okay, open the podium, public comment on this item, the cemetery contract renewal. Close podium. Okay, any discussion?
Just, is the language of the motion to enter into contract, or just to approve the amended contract?
Let me look at my motion. To enter into contract with Lily Jones. So you approved it already before, but this is really amending the, what you approved in the prior one. And I'm going to need to see her assurance documents, certificates, before I approve the, before I sign.
Okay. And can you give us the language that you'd want for the budget amendment?
I would say to authorize the budget amendment in the amount of $900 from the General Fund Reserve to the, is it? No, from the General Fund Reserve to the?
I'll start with that one, is that okay?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $900 from the General Fund Reserve to make up the shortfall of the contract for the insurance.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right.
Oh, we need a roll call.
Mr. Councilor Shantek? Aye. Councilor Craig?
Aye.
Councilor Oseem, your direction?
Aye. Passes?
Okay. And the second motion would be move to authorize city manager to enter into contract with Lily Jones to provide ground maintenance at the Dunsborough Cemetery from Au, excuse me, from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, in accordance with the amended contract.
I'll second that. Roll call, we don't need a roll call this soon. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item, good business, first item. PTC, what is it? LTC, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and a member of the council, the sidewalk project has been completed, and as part of that, there is some cost that the stage is looking to fund. And there's, as part of this package, you can scroll through and see a list of the costs towards the back, right after the bid, that shows what the SCORE is willing to pay for. Concrete demolition, asphalt demolition, new concrete, hot mix asphalt, bollards, tree removal, and signs, as it pertains to the bus. And if you add those up, it's a total amount of $14,218 that is above what we're already getting from the LTC through the grant, from RSTP, and the amount is close to $35,000. And this is, this is really a good thing for us to help mitigate some of the shortfalls that we had since the project came in higher than expected. And I'd really like to thank Melissa. She, when these costs came in higher than expected, I gave her a call, we wanted to keep this project going, because we, we have four, three pools of money. Last year's gas tax SB1, this year's gas tax for SB1, and then the RSTP funds that we got the grants from. And we thought we'd have a surplus of extra money, and that wasn't the case, the bids came in higher than expected. So Melissa sharpened her pencil to see what they could do to help out with, in regards to the stage portion, where the work, like the pad across the street where you can see the bollards that were put in, and that pad that was, that's set for, that's where the new bus shelter is going to go, that is being paid for, this money, they're paying for that work that was done. And the tree removal for site distance and safety, they're paying for that as well. So the total amount that came, that they came up with is the $14,218 that's in exhibit B. So there, and as part of that, they're having to get a MOU, for the city council to authorize a MOU to be able to release those funds.
So first of all, the public, is Melissa Cummings in her official title, Director of Transportation or something?
General Services, I think.
Okay. So the bottom line is, money's going where?
It's going to pay for the project, to the contractor, really.
Okay, good. Any questions in the council?
From what fund is this?
This is from the stage. So it'll go, we will get the MOU signed, and then that will allow them to write the city a check in the amount of $14,218. We'll receive it into the, I believe, Blake set up a fund for this project, it'll go into that fund and it'll pay for the cost.
What will we be spending it on?
What's that?
What will we be spending it on, or is it already been spent?
It's really already been spent, yeah.
Okay, I'll open the podium for public comment. Public is still not commenting. I'll close the podium. Discussion from the council.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you know what we might be putting in the parking spot?
They put it, they had it on order, Blake, do you remember here? They placed it on order, and they're hoping, the goal is to have it installed before the winter, before the snow.
Oh, they're doing the restriping on the parking lot, that's a huge, all the neighbors.
Yeah, city staff did the restriping. We had a problem with, people, we were concerned about people backing into the bollards.
I know.
Yeah. And we saw a little bit of taillight plastic there, so Bill, our color board supervisor, was quick to get in there and reorient that, so it's one way now, easier to get in and out.
You stole my favorite parking spot.
Oh.
Did you miss?
I think we lost one parking spot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Any motion?
Yes.
I move to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the city of Dunsborough and the Siskiyou County Department of General Services to work together in a coordinated effort to complete the 2018 Dunsborough sidewalk project.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, the urgency item that we have.
Thank you. This, this is a request from the FAA, or a requirement from FAA, that we have a resolution from the city council authorizing a representative, I put myself down, it could be anybody else, but I've been working with the FAA. In August 30th, we resubmitted an application to the FAA to use the grant funds that we have pooled to go towards the engineering work that would be needed for the airport runway replacement.
What would the goal that bring us down to, is that there was dollars left in money in there?
No, I don't know the total that we have. I think it's, it's around $500,000, maybe four or four something. But we'll still have some money in there. In the, if you remember just last month, I came to the city council and got the authorization from the city council to apply for the 100% no-match required grant money that was just announced about a month ago, where they announced a billion dollars. So that, that application is in, and part of that application requires, it's a very short timeline for us to be able to get that, that money. Part of that is we have engineering done, and kind of a shovel-ready project to be able to receive that money. And unfortunately, the, this requirement here has to be done by tomorrow, the signatures have to be in place by tomorrow. So we're fortunate that we had a city council meeting today. It was unfortunate that I had to just put this on without a whole lot of time to review it. So there is attached to this a cover sheet that went with it that kind of shows what's required. If you look at page two, it shows that they require this by September 7th, meaning tomorrow. I also have to get the city attorney's signature on this, so this was sent off to John Kenny. I talked to him briefly today to let him know that this would be coming as well. I don't think there's going to be any problem there. I haven't talked to him after he received it, so I will have to talk to him tomorrow. But in conversation, it sounded like it'd be fine, but he'd review it. So the suggested motion is looking at, to have the city authorize city manager to execute grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration. And with this is also the California Department of Transportation. This is the 4.5% of the grant that we get from them, so this resolution includes that as well. And to authorize me to execute other documents that may have come up associated with this project, there's project number 3-06-0066-015-2018. So this is specific to what we're asking for the grant funds, it's nothing, so what the council would be authorizing me to do is just execute anything that's associated with this project.
Okay. Ms. Shantek, any questions?
No.
I don't either.
Okay, I'll open the podium for public comment. No public comment, close podium. Discussion.
My only, I only want to say thank you for dutifully receiving the letter, pointing this out and getting right all that, bringing it to our attention. Sounds like we probably would have had a special meeting to get this done if we didn't have tonight's meeting already scheduled. So just want to say thank you, good job on catching this, it's very important that we get it done. With that, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute grant agreements with the FAA and the California Department of Transportation for the Airport Improvement Program, project number 3-06-0066-015-2018, and authorize the city manager to execute any other documents associated with acceptance of said grants, grant funds by resolution number 2018-16.
Yeah, second that motion. There's no dollars associated with this, or any signature. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else we have for the council for tonight?
I just want to thank Julie and Blake for assisting this. Julie got the resolution put together. I mean, we were dealing with the fire today, and this was one of those things that was like, oh my gosh. And if it wasn't for Julie and Blake, I don't know if we'd be here tonight, so.
Thank you, Julie.
Well, it's what I expect from the two of them, they always do that kind of work. I adjourn the meeting. Everyone be safe.
What's your, what's your motion?
First, it's a question.
Yes, first technically you should ask for most of your.
I have a motion for Julie.
You want to adjourn?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.